At the elementary level.
Yeah, we've definitely done what we call compacting the curriculum, make sure that we've identified the priority units and made sure we paste them out. So regardless of if you're in the virtual setting, in person setting at elementary, you're still going to get those those learning of those really key outcomes that you have to have at those some of those younger levels. And while I wouldn't go so far as to say they're getting twice as much, what our principals are saying is they walk around our schools. They're seeing how, what an amazing job our teachers are doing of getting around to every student. You can imagine with smaller classes and with only half the students there. With those in-person students, they really are able to give them much more focused attention. And that means more conferring, more, you know, one-on-one conversation, more small group instruction. And so what students are getting on the days that they're there is really the best that our teachers have. And our teachers are amazing. And so they're really, they, if they are there in the building on those days, they are getting some really good learning with those teachers.
We heard some comments about the virtual academy and is there really a need now if the high schooler, as the high schoolers, if we approve them to go to the virtual? Is there a need for the virtual academy to change again? Or can they go back to their preferred schedule that was not following the in-person? I mean, I understand the staffing issue because we were having some virtual teachers teaching in person and virtual. And that was the reason for having to follow the in-person schedule by the virtual academy. But is that still necessary at this point? And do you see any modifications being made to that schedule?
Certainly know why you're asking. A lot of people wouldn't, you know, like to make changes at this point. But I know as we've had conversations in this group multiple times, unfortunately, we are going to be keeping those schedules as they are currently. In part, it's due to the staff. And we also know that we have some teachers who require to be fully virtual, that we can't move those students around. We know that we have class size limits in certain places where we can't just start moving students around, particularly at this point in the quarter. When students change classes now, they actually lose all of their work that they've had up until this point in the quarter. Just because you can imagine if Debbie, you and I are two teachers and I've got all of these assignments and you gave different assignments to students. It doesn't translate between those two classes. So we'll be keeping students in their current schedules at this point.
Okay, thank you.
And just to add to that, we do have some teachers teaching multiple levels, elementary and middle. And the schedules are created right now to work. And if we start shifting the times, it might impact, you know, the other school being able to be serviced by that teacher. So all the complexities.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions? Okay. So then may I have a motion in a second to the Board of Education to approve the recommendation for the remainder of the first semester, which ends January 15th, 2021 as follows. One, elementary students in grades K through five continue the blended schedule through the end of the semester. Two, middle and high school students in grades six through 12 return to distance learning full time, starting November 30th through the remainder of the first semester.
Done it.
Again.
Call please, Nikki.
Ms. David?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Schindler?
Yes.
Dr. Cortino?
Yes.
Mr. Seltzer?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Next up, we have Mike Ross, who has been waiting very patiently. I think you were one of the first people on this call. So thanks for sticking around all evening. And we're eager to hear about the athletics and activities program evaluation.
Thank you, President Todd, Dr. Marty and all the board members. I appreciate your time. Certainly, what you guys do is tremendous. It's amazing everything that goes into a night like this and the school year. So I'm honored to be here tonight to talk about our athletic and activities programs. Certainly, we have a rich history in Parkway dating back to when Parkway first opened back in 1957 and 58. And then we opened West High and then North High and South High. So our goal has always been to provide opportunities for all, to include all student athletes, all people who want to participate in activities and everyone who wants to participate in clubs. So that's our goal always moving forward. Next slide, please. As you can see, we have a number of Misha sanctioned sports athletics. We just completed our fall season last week. We're into our winter season now with practices. Hopefully, games will start after our Thanksgiving break. We're certainly make adjustments to schedules and everything, but we have a wide variety of offerings for athletics. Next slide, please. And also, most importantly, we have so many student athletes or students that are involved in our Misha sanctioned activities. Our music programs are exploding with band and choir and orchestra, our scholar bowl activities, speech debate and theater and our spirit groups with cheer and dance. Certainly, we have many students that are involved in those activities. Next slide, please. Everything we do is certainly based about building relationships with our students, with our staff. And really, our athletes don't care how much we know about a sport until they know that we care about them. So that's, we have such a caring attitude. And obviously, that was added to our mission statement last year. So those are some benefits that we have. Participation helps with our GPA, helps with attendance, college acceptance, working with time management, communication skills, commitment level, all those things that we're working with and students benefit involved in those. Next slide, please. We try to teach servant leadership principles to all of our student athletes and activity students in regards to supporting your team, growing as a person, developing listening skills, building community, and certainly reflecting and learning. Next slide. Our high school activities benefit in many ways from co-curriculars, better educational outcomes in school, enhance school engagement, positive youth development, healthier behaviors. Next slide, please. Going kind of quickly, trying to honor your time. I know it's been a long evening. Many benefits post-high school, positive results, better citizens in society and certainly school and community benefits. Next slide, please. Some of the value-added components in regards to athletics and activities inherently educationally, but teamwork, fair play, work ethic, self-discipline that our students obtain, building self-confidence and certainly developing skills to handle adversity. Because nothing is going to come easy, not only in life, but in athletics and in our educational setting. Other improved value and components, improve mental and physical health, fostering success later in life with college careers and just becoming a contributing member of society. Next slide, please. Parkway throughout the years, one of my favorite photos here is the 1958 photo of the cheerleaders at Parkway High School. So throughout the years, we've certainly developed. We have great student support, our band members down there from from North High. Many activities, many famous people have come out of Parkway. You may recognize someone there on the left used to play baseball at Parkway Central, Max Scherzer. He's had an okay career. Also on the far right is an Olympian in 1984. Dave Silvestri graduated from Parkway Central, played with a guy you may have known too, Mark McGuire in the 84 Olympics. Sarah Haskins on the bottom there was in the Olympics in Beijing, Parkway South grad. She's a cross-country state champion and swimmer and track athlete. So throughout the years, many successes and all levels in Parkway. Next slide. Many accomplishments as team and individual state champions. A photo on the left is one of my favorites, I think it's from 1972. John Schnell was a head golf coach at Central High, also won state championship at Central High in wrestling. And maybe one of our most famous athletes, bottom right photos, Scott Schatzman was a four-time state champion, undefeated, never lost a career match. And more importantly, graduated high school with a 4.0 GPA. Excellent, please. Some of our state champions throughout the years at Central High. Also, we have 93 Final Four appearances at Parkway Central High School. Next slide, please. North High State Champions, there's one of our track runners, one of track state championship. And I believe it was three years ago, 2018, 15 Final Four appearances also for North High. Next slide, please. South High, I mentioned Sarah Haskins, how she was involved in Olympics. Her cousin Carson was a pretty famous tennis player for us at Parkway South, undefeated state champion, four years in a row, a golf state title at Parkway South. And there's a celebration of Parkway South State Championship in softball. Fred McConnell was the softball coach back then. Fred is our all-time winningest coach in Parkway with over 1,027 wins. So lots of accomplishments at Parkway South High School, also 31 Final Four appearances. Next slide, please. Rich tradition at Parkway West High School, swimming is phenomenal at West High, many state titles. We have one state basketball championship and that was at Parkway West in 1991. Next slide, please. Parkway West has 38, yes, I said 38 state championships. Throughout the years, 24 of those are in swimming, but certainly a great tradition at Parkway West and really throughout all of Parkway. Next slide, please. Besides our individual accomplishments on the athletic arena, we also have many clubs and activities at all of our high schools. Too many to name, but I have a slide prepared really for all four. Just a kind of quick and things here, clubs at Central High, North High, next slide, please. South High and then also at West High, many opportunities for kids. You may not be an athlete, you may not be in the band, you may not be a cheerleader. But if you want to get involved at the high school level to be included and to find your niche at the high school, that we have so many offerings and so many sponsors that want to give back. Next slide, please. Also, at the middle school level, we have many opportunities for clubs and activities. We don't have Misha sanctioned sports like we do at the high school level, levels, but we do have intramurals, many clubs, many activities. All five of our middle schools, these are just some examples for Central Middle. Next slide, please. Northeast Middle, South Middle and also West Middle, Southwest also. And next slide, please. Okay, so what I've done is kind of examined with the help of Nathan Tyson's office, our participation numbers throughout the years for many years ago. And then most recently, these are actually numbers from this, from this school year, this past fall. As you can see with our athletics and activities, cheer and dance, we've had over 2,200 participants at the high school level. And think about it, that's pretty amazing with everything's going on in society with COVID in school. But we had 2,200 student athletes participating. Next slide, please. Going back to last spring, when everything kind of hit, we actually started practices. We weren't able to play any games, but we had over 1,400 student athletes involved in our spring sports before things were closed down back in March. And then moving forward backwards, our winter season last year was the last full season that we completed. And we had over 518 athletes in the winter, we only have four, four sports that are going on at that time. So next slide, please. What I've done here is taken a historical look at where we're at numbers-wise in regards to participation. We have numbers kept from, from many years ago when we started really and to this year. But over the last four, five, six years, I've taken a look at the numbers just in Parkway throughout the years. Our numbers in baseball are pretty solid trends. I'm looking for in Parkway, not only nationally, our cross-country numbers are up, our football numbers are down, which we'll talk about a little bit. Next slide, please. Our swimming numbers are up in Parkway and that probably is attributed to our great Parkway Swim Club, strong and vibrant. Our track numbers are very strong, our wrestling numbers are going down a little bit too, and we'll talk about that a little bit. So next slide, please. Football participation across the state of Missouri, not only we're seeing this in Parkway, we're seeing this in the St. Louis area. And we're also seeing this across the state. These are actually Misha numbers over the last five or six years. So you can see in 2014, we had over 23,000, 23,000 people playing football in the state of Missouri. Right now, that number is at 19,900. So we've had a decline of about 14% in our football participation. Next slide, please. We also offer emerging sports, field hockey, girls lacrosse, boys volleyball, water pole. These are activities that are pretty popular in the St. Louis area, but maybe not as much across the state. Misha doesn't offer a state series for these because there's not more than 50 teams. Next slide, please. Our field hockey participation numbers, this is again is across the state. We have over 1,100 athletes participation, participating in field hockey. Next slide. Girls lacrosse becoming more and more popular, as you can see, we have, I believe this past year, we're 1,800 lacrosse players across the state. Next slide. And boys volleyball is growing especially in the St. Louis area, over 1,200. And next slide. Water pole participation, that's in the spring, there's about 500 athletes that are involved in water pole across the state. So obviously, you know, GPAs, you know, that's, that's why we're here. We're here to learn and we study our trends across activities and athletics. And what we found nationally and also locally in St. Louis and especially in Parkway, those associated with activities and athletics tend to have a higher GPA, tend to have a lower dropout rate. And they have, seem to have a stronger commit, commitment to school and to society. So what we've done, next slide, please, is taking a look and examine GPAs, not only this year, but over the last couple of years. This first slide here is Parkway Central High School. You can see many outstanding members of our groups. A lot of these groups have roughly a 3.5 GPA. If you notice girls tennis, they have a 3.99 GPA at Central High, which is truly amazing. So we practice all the time, are building athletic directors with their teachers and counselors, are providing support and staying on top of these things. But as you can see, our student athletes, this is at Central High. Next slide, please. North High, same thing, we track everything. And then the next two slides, please. We do all the tracking. So we have all these reported throughout the years. Next slide, please. And West High. Also, every, every season, we compile data from every sport, every level, what varsity JV and freshman. And this dates back to 1958. I found a file the other day and had John Schnell's handwritten notes on his golf team. So every record we have, that's why I mentioned earlier about Fred McConnell with a 1,012 victories. Everything has been recorded throughout the years with Don Sparks when he was the district AD. Gerald Lindeman did a great job with records in my gun, so I'm trying to carry on that tradition. So that's just one example of what we do with every team in Parkway that we have. Next slide, please. Safety, obviously, this is our utmost concern is taking care of our student athletes, taking care of our coaches and taking care of our fans and community members when they come on, on campus, whether it's security at events. Obviously, now with our, with our COVID, with the health screenings, those take place every single day. So when a student athlete arrives to campus, he's greeted either by the certified athletic trainer or by the athletic director or by the coach. And they go through the daily screening questions. We also try to have as much professional development as we can for our coaches. We work hard and stress sportsmanship with our kids to keep them safe on the field and on the courts and in the gym. Misha and National Federation has many seminars and professional development in regards to anti-bullying, student mental health. We mentioned that earlier in the earlier conversation, that's so vitally important. So we're really looking at all aspects of safety, not only physically, but also mentally. Next slide, please. Athletic injuries, we, we try to track everything that we have. We, we have, again, certified athletic trainers through Mercy Sports Med. They're at every high school event we have, whether it's practice or a game. They will treat all injuries, they will take care of all notifications with parents, they will talk to all doctors. Next slide, please. This is just one breakdown. Again, this is Central High, I have one for each school, we won't go in depth each one. But it's broken down by the month of the year, how many visits they actually have to the athletic training room, how many initial evals we have from that certified athletic trainer, how many reevals we have, how many doctors visits we have, how many therapeutic exercises? What are we doing to get that student athlete back on the court or on the arena as quickly as possible? So our trainers through Mercy do an outstanding job working with us. Next slide, please. We also track concussions through the Misha website, we report everything, our trainers do a great job. We have a breakdown for each of the high schools here. Again, this is Central High on my first slide. You can see, and then the school year 2018, 19, I believe we had 30, 37 concussions at Central High. I can't see the bottom of my slide. No, it's not 37. Yes, it is. So anyway, all that's tracked, obviously, there's a return to play protocol that we institute through Misha that our trainer goes through. We want our student athletes to be healthy. They, they have to have clearance from a medical doctor before they come back and participate. Next slide, please. In fact, if you can advance about three or four slides. Keep going, please. Thank you. One more. And last one. Okay. So student participation, gap students, we look at all areas, all of our student athletes involved in activities. You know, what areas are they coming from? Can you advance to the next slide, please? So gap students are students that might fit in one of these categories or maybe two or three or possibly all five of those. So we look at, we look at blacks, we look at Hispanics, we look at those that receive free and reduced lunches. We look at students who are involved in IEPs. We also look at students who are involved as English learners. So what we found in our football numbers going across the board there, we had 54% of our football players were in one of these categories as a gap student. Our track, we had 48% participation, basketball 48% and wrestling about 50%. So what we're doing is trying to just get a correlation to see where we're at. We're trying to continue, continue to monitor our numbers and just try to help with our successful transition for all student athletes. And again, the goal is participation, whether that's in athletics, whether that's in activities or whether that's a club, you know, our esports club is booming at the high school and middle school level. Our robotics clubs are booming and we just want our students to just find that niche and that, that connectiveness to school. And our sponsors are doing a tremendous job there. Next slide, please. Student surveys, again, with the help of Nathan Tyson's office, we reach out to our students, we reach out to our parents. And we also reach out to, to our coaches in regards to, hey, tell us what we're doing. You know, we, we feel like we're doing a good job, but what, what areas can we improve on? What areas are we doing things, you know, really well? Next slide, please. I apologize, I know these are kind of hard to read, but I'm going to summarize. If you look, the blue and the light blue, those are all good things that we're doing. So I'm going to summarize very quickly on this first slide here. So we ask our students, are our coaches communicating well? Are they prepared for practices? Are they providing a positive experience? Are you seeing personal growth? And does the coach know what he's doing? Do they, do we practice the fundamentals? And by and large, about 85% of all these areas, our students say that we're doing a pretty good job at. Next slide, please. This has to do with participation. If you play a sport, do you want to come back the following year and the following year? And we found that 72, 72% of our students are saying, yes, I feel comfortable, I want to come back. 81% say that they have a positive experience and they've established positive relationships. Next slide, please. These deal with our coaches are giving good feedback, you know, everyone's concerned with playing time. Well, not everybody can start, but there's role players, there's people that come off the bench. And 78% of our students say, yes, I'm, I'm happy, I'm okay with the amount of playing time I'm receiving and what my teammates are receiving. Leadership opportunities, 92% say that our coaches are doing a great job. And they, they give that back to the students and throw that on their back. Next slide, please. Whole lot here, again, lots of blue and light blue, which is all good things. So we asked our students, you know, are our coaches approachable? Are they encouraging? Are they fair? Are they organized? Are they patient? Are they supportive? Are they understanding? And by and large, our survey results are showing anywhere between 85 and 90% either agree or strongly, strongly agree. So that's all good stuff. Next slide, please. This year, we asked our student athletes, are our coaches promoting goal-setting, character development, personal well-being, safety? Do you feel safe at our events? Post-secondary opportunities, are they helping you with recruiting with a college aspect? There's so much that goes into it. Not everyone's going to be a division one athlete. Perhaps a division two, division three in AI, you know, there's, there's, there's components for everybody. And by and large, our students are telling us that we're doing a lot of good things that you can see by the, by the blue arrows in the light blue. Next slide, please. Are we creating a school culture, a positive school culture? By and large, we're getting good results there. Next, next slide. Are you doing better academically because you're involved in athletics and activities? And by and large, 83% either agree or strongly agree. And again, the time commitment to be on a team or to be in the band or choir is tremendous. But, but our, our students feel like they're doing a good job because of what they're connected to. Next slide, please. This may be one of the most important ones. Do you feel safe and secure at our events? Whether it's a practice, whether it's a game or whether you're traveling on the road to, to a sister school. And 94% of our student athletes say, I feel, I feel safe. Next slide, please. Is there, is there value added? You know, is this worth it for you? What are you looking for? Are you getting out of this for what you want? And 95% either strongly agree or agree to that statement. Next slide, please. Facilities, this is always interesting because I feel like we've got a lot of great areas in Parkway. And I also feel like we have some areas that need some attention. And that's exactly what our students and our parents on the next slide, you'll see, they feel like our facilities are in good condition. We have good quality, okay? But also, you can go back there, Nikki. Also, they feel like, you know, if you look at our stadiums, we're playing lacrosse in our stadiums, we're playing field hockey, we're playing soccer, we're playing football, we're having track meets. In our stadiums, we have beautiful turf fields, we have beautiful scoreboards. But we're also hearing from a lot of folks involved in our aquatics, whether, whether it's boys or girls swimming or water pole or even our swim club, you know, our pools, a lot of them were built, Nikki, I believe it's slide 68. Our pools were built when the schools were built. So we, we have to put some attention towards them moving forward in the future. And also with our tennis courts, we're hearing a little bit there too. Barriers to participation, you know, what, what's hindering you from playing, from continuing on with this sport or activity that you're in? And obviously, these are pretty obvious answers, time commitment, outside interest, perhaps playing time goes into it for some of them. And some of them express an interest with some transportation issue, issues, simply getting to, out to our school for our games. Next slide, please. We also ask our students, when they weren't involved in an activity for the following year, why did you not come back and play that sport? Many of the same answers we had before, time commitment, want to focus on schoolwork or simply had a desire to focus on other outside opportunities. So obviously, natural examples. Next slide, please. So next, we surveyed our parents and we pretty much asked the same questions. But just like at home, you get different answers sometimes when you're sitting around the dinner table, as opposed to when you have a phone conversation with the parent. So we wanted to talk to our parents and we want to hear them and, and build upon their, their answers to move forward. So next slide, please. In regards to the parents' thoughts on their child coming back for that sport, 75% agreed, yes, I want my student to come back for that sport. 83% said, yes, my son or daughter's had a positive experience. Next slide, please. Again, we ask our parents, are our coaches approachable, encouraging, fair, organized, patient, supportive? And most importantly, are they understanding to the needs of your student, your son or daughter? And 85% are getting a positive answer on that. Next slide, please. We ask our parents, our coaches, are they teaching the fundamentals? Do they know what they're doing? Are they providing opportunities for growth? Yes, they are. Some parents mentioned that, yes, they want better communication by our coaches. You can never over-communicate, the more the better. So certainly, that's a concern we'll, we'll pass on to our coaches. Next slide, please. Again, our parents feel like we're getting good feedback from our coaches, playing time at times can be an issue. Leadership opportunities, they're expressing interest that, that they think things are going well there. And they feel that our coaches have a good vision for the program. Next slide, please. Are our coaches promoting a positive school culture? Many of our parents believe they are between 84 and 86%, whether it's goal-setting, personal well-being, opportunities for college opportunities, and then most importantly, are they feeling safe? Yes, to all those, which is good. Next slide, please. Are they helping my child or daughter doing better academically? And again, they, they think our coaches are doing a very good job. 92% have said, yes, we appreciate and we understand that the work they're doing is very valuable. Next slide, please. Again, we're asking our parents, do you feel safe and secure at our events? And just like the students, 98% of our parents are feeling, yes, we have a safe venue. Next slide, please. Is this important? Is it adding value to my son or daughter's high school experience? Pretty obvious question. 94% are saying, yes, we're Ninety-four percent are saying, yes, we're doing some really good things in Parkway. Next slide, please. Facilities. Pretty much the same answers as student athletes. We have a lot of good things going, and I think we also have some areas that some of our aquatics folks are concerned about. We need to look in the future at our situation with our pools. We need to look in, in the, in the future situation with our tennis courts and even some of our secondary practice fields need some attention. But by and large, we've got some great facilities in Parkway. We've, we've put a lot of financial support in those to make things nice, but there's always room for improvement. Next slide, please. Some of the barriers that our student athletes talked about, you know, why aren't you coming back? Outside interest, time commitment, some of them mentioned about our coaches, maybe they just get, didn't get along with the coach. That's always kind of heartbreaking for me, but certainly that happens at, at times. Next slide, please. And again, we asked them, our parents, why, why is your son or daughter not continuing to play? The answers we're receiving back, a desire to focus on other opportunities, focus on schoolwork, and just simply the time commitment. Next slide. Coaches throughout the years, I mentioned earlier, a golf coach from fifty-seven. Here's a picture of some other football coaches, and there's a couple Hall of Fame basketball coaches there. We've had great coaches and great mentors throughout the years in Parkway and, and great kids. Next slide, please. But we talked to our coaches and we said, okay, give us your feedback. And before, before I get to that, I want to talk about this slide. I think years ago, we had, you know, you would have a lot of our coaches in the building. They teach with the kids, be there all day, and then they go outside and they coach with them. Times are changing now. It's, it's becoming more and more difficult to attract and, and retain coaches, and that's going to be an issue going down the road. So I asked my building athletic directors to do a survey and talk to their coaches and give me some numbers. So what we found with this, fifty-six percent of our teachers at Central High are teaching the building and coach there. Forty-four percent are outside the building. At North High, we only have twenty-nine percent that are actually teaching or working in the building and seventy-one percent outside. And then South and West, I had very similar numbers, about forty percent are actually on staff in the building and about sixty percent are outside. Next slide, please. Our coaches, so just like we surveyed our, our students, and just like we surveyed our parents, our athletic directors have had conversations throughout the years and months and weeks with our coaches. Are there struggles and challenges? Yes, there are, most definitely. What are some of those issues that you see as a coach? And here's what we're hearing from them. It gets back to our facilities again, our pools, our tennis courts, our outdoor fields, family commitments. It's becoming increasingly more difficult, especially with everything going on in society to devote that time, you know, after school. Parental involvement is a lot different now in two thousand and twenty than it was ten, twenty years ago. Parents are more involved and then trying to balance all the COVID issues this year, the health screens and checking them in and including equipment and getting there early and staying late and, you know, just monitoring locker room. So we're doing the right things. All, all those things are challenges this year. And then our issue, you know, a lot of our coaches voiced their opinion on our stipends earlier this fall. You know, we didn't know where we were going to be. So we made some adjustments. I think we're going to correct that adjustment, but that was a struggle and a challenge that some of our coaches had. Also, some of the positives, you know, I mentioned our facilities, our stadiums are beautiful, our scoreboards are beautiful. Our uniforms, we're getting more and more support from, financial support from, from Patty helping out there. Our, our student satisfaction is growing. We have more activities that we're recognizing across the area. It's really a commitment to excellence that are, that we, that our coaches feel like the district is, is having and has had throughout the years. Next slide, please. Circling back, again, I think everything we do, whether it's, whether it's a club, whether it's an activity or whether it's an athletic event, it gets back to building relationships. And, and I love these two photos. This, the one on the left was down at, at state volleyball this year down at Cape and the West High volleyball team. Just the connectiveness they have with the coach and just how much the entire staff, not only there, but at other schools and other coaches, that, that caring attitude. Next slide, please. Circling back one last time, one thing that I didn't mention earlier, I want to point out on this sheet, and this is one of my favorites of all time in Parkway, and I'm closing here. I know we're short on time. But on top left photo is a Parkway graduate. His name is Darian Cockrell. Darian is the two thousand and twenty-one Missouri Teacher of the Year, not in, not in St. Louis, but across the entire state of Missouri. And to hear his story, he's been on the news. And if you can Google him and find out his story, just the, the, the background that he came from as a troubled youth, not much support. He was in and out of foster homes. His parents weren't, weren't around, and he was just going around. He was going down the wrong path and, and he, he would tell you that. He got involved in athletics and activities at one of our middle schools, and our teachers and, and a counselor at this particular school basically took him in and adopted him when he was at school. And then a family from Chesterfield literally adopted him and took him in. And like you said, it saved my life because my friends, where I grew up with, the neighborhood I was in, they're not around anymore and they, they've had a tough way to go. But the teachers, the coaches, my teammates, the friendships that I developed in activities and in athletics in Parkway, that saved my life. And he went on to play at a small school, got an athletic scholarship, got his teaching degree, and he's done wonderful, wonderful things. He's a great husband. He, he's a great father. And he, he is so very proud to be a part of Parkway Athletics. And I think that just kind of symbolizes everything that we're talking about here throughout the years and, and really everything I talked about tonight. So I just want to mention that. It's just one example. There's thousands of those examples, but you won't meet a finer person than, than Darian Cockrell and the struggles he went through and the maturation process was just tremendous. So with that, I'm going to close and hopefully I provided a, a lot of information in a short amount of time. I, I, again, I appreciate your time. If you have any questions or comments, certainly I can entertain those at this time.
Well, thanks very much, Mike. I, I know it's late. I've got a few comments, but I'll, I'll put them all into one quick thing and end with, with a question. First off, I just, just in the last week or so, I saw a fairly lengthy interview with Gary and, and you're absolutely right. Amazing story, very moving. I, I really, I really got a lot out of that. I'll put a plug in for, for a new pool facility at every school. I, I, at West, I was, I was very directly involved in raising some money for the, for the PTO to, to buy starting blocks. And in, there's so many, so many other things that need to happen, obviously, but, but definitely that. I have personal experience with the concussion protocol with both my kids, my son in volleyball, my, my daughter in cheerleading. Both went through the entire, you know, from start to finish with Mercy, the Mercy trainers and stuff. And, and just what a great job they do for all of our athletes. The, I, I have two questions. One's a frivolous question. What the heck is the Skittles Club I saw in one of the middle school? And then the, I just want to ask about character education. I know some of our coaches are really, really good. They're great coaches, but they're also great, great coaches and with respect to, to educating our kids and how to be great sports, sports people and, and, and just build character on their teams. And they, and I know they do it on and off the field. Is that something that we actively? We really push coaches to develop something like that, or is that just some of these coaches taking it on themselves and, and, and developing their own program?
First question, Skittles Club? Can't answer that for you. Sorry, especially at ten forty at night. Second, second question, or your comment about character development. This, this gets back to establishing relationships and just, just doing the right thing for our kids. Our, our building athletic directors and activities directors, they've done a tremendous job. And I want to give them a shout out, you know, at Central High, John Theobald, at North High, Corey Johnson, at South High, Matt Roach, and at, at West High, Brian Kesser. They've done a tremendous job of working with their sponsors, working with the teachers, working with the coaches in regards to character development. Patty, in, in my budget, supports ongoing development for them. But really, our building athletic directors have done such a tremendous job with working and, and having classes for our coaches, you know, to, to work with our kids and do the right thing. And, and they've just done yeoman's work in that regard. So a lot of it falls back on them. But again, when you surround yourself with good people, good things happen. And we, we've been very blessed in Parkway. We've all been blessed. I've been blessed for so many years to be around great people, great teachers and great coaches and great administrators and great leadership. And that, that's what it's all about, surrounding yourself with good people and, and working with great kids. And hopefully they'll leave here just like Darian did and just become a productive member of society and just do great things. So proud of so many of our, of our student athletes and so very proud of our coaches.
If I could jump in, Mr. Todd, Miss Mike has sent his coaches and A Ds to character education workshops. He's done that over the years. He has been intentional and you're not, don't forget, Mike, you, you've done good work in exposing your A Ds and coaches to the work around character education and the importance of it with sports. So pat yourself on the back. You're doing good stuff and you are being intentional with it.
On the other hand, he left out the slide about the nineteen ninety-nine Parkway North hockey team that went nine and thirteen, and I can't let that go.
I'll add that next time. Thank you, Dr. Watson.
Hey, Mike, I have a question on, on the numbers of in and outs. Was that, does that include assistants and head coaches?
Yes, yes, assistants and head coaches.
I think that's a trend, though. I mean, I think, I, I know that there's a lot of, over the years, my involvement with, as a school administrator, we've, we've seen a need to go out and hire people from outside the system. So I think it's not, it's not unusual, is it?
It, it is a trend, not only, you know, in St. Louis area, but nationally, but you know, part of our problem is we have so many great, I mean, we have twenty-three offerings for athletics. And that's, that's a lot of, of coaches and a lot of sponsors with, with the musicals and the speech and debate and drama and cheer and dance, and then all of our clubs. So we're spread kind of thin a little bit because we have so many offerings, which is a great problem to have.
You know, one of, one of the measuring sticks to me about the, the good work that Parkway has done over the years in, in its athletic program, clubs and activities, you go to a Parkway Hall of Fame recognition night, and oftentimes the people who are being honored will, will say that something happened to them through an athletic program or through a music program, drama. It's something outside the classroom. Obviously, the classroom is important. But what really helped them was, and then that, that special mentor or coach. And so it really does pay tribute to the, the programs that support our academic program and how vital they are. And Mike, there's more and more literature every year that just says, supports the idea that students engaged in these activities are higher grade point averages, but they also develop a character, they develop leadership skills. It, it's such a compliment. And one of my worries is, as budgets get tighter, is the ability to maintain these activities because they're so important to so many young people for, for obvious reasons and for others. It just keeps them engaged and keeps them away from doing things that wouldn't be healthy. And right now, I think, Mike, you'd agree, in this time of COVID, you know, one of the things that give involvement is they're probably paying attention to their health versus some other behaviors we don't want students to be engaged in.
Dr. Marty, I would echo that. And I would, I would say also, I mean, I am so impressed with the offerings that Parkway has. I certainly didn't have these kinds of opportunities at my high school when I grew up. And I mean, there's something for everybody and kudos to the parents who support through fundraising efforts, these activities and these clubs and even the, you know, some of the clubs that are not sponsored by the school district and are, you know, student initiated or parent initiated and all of the effort that, that goes into that. I, I would hope too that we could continue to see everything be able to be sustained through all the efforts everybody puts into them. It's great for our, our students. There's, there's no reason why a student should be involved in something. I think somebody could find something to, to be engaged in for sure. And then if they're, if there's not, they could start one. So it's supposed to be student initiated. So, and we've seen students do that. So it's great.
Thank you for your time. And more importantly, thank you, board, for your support. You've been nothing but wonderful, all of you in attending events, but just the, the, not only the financial support that the district provides for us, but just, just being there and being a part of our, our, our student athletes' lives, but our coaches and just rewarding them. So it's, it's, you know, I'm, I'm blessed to be a part of, to have a tremendous team.
And we're blessed to have someone like you, Mike.
Ditto. I agree. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you all. Have a great evening.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
I think wasn't Debbie volunteering to be a cheerleading coach? I thought that's what she was going to volunteer.
Oh, no, no, no.
We're a cheerleader, weren't you?
I, I was. My, my former life, dance, dancing chair, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, there you go, Mike. He's qualified.
Apparently Kevin can play hockey.
Depends who you ask.
All right. So we have no work session. We have no special meeting. The next anticipated close session will be held on December ninth, two thousand and twenty. Details of the close session will be posted within twenty-four hours of the anticipated meeting. We have no closed session to go into, so may have a motion in a second to adjourn the regular.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero.